Mayor, we are ready to start.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order. As we do not have a flag again, we will skip the pledge of allegiance tonight. Clerk will note that all council members are present via Zoom. Under ceremonies, announcements, and appointments, we do have a couple of announcements tonight. City Hall reopened on Monday following the governor's guidelines in the Idaho rebounds plan. We have implemented new safety protocols for the public and staff. We are encouraging our customers to do business online where possible by visiting the city's website in postfallsidaho.org/online. Post Falls Chamber is hosting a virtual town hall meeting via Zoom next Tuesday, May 12th at 12:00 PM. City Administrator Shelley Underwood, Chief Pat Knight, and myself will be there to discuss COVID-19 and answer frequently asked questions. For more information, including how to attend the meeting, visit the Chamber's website at postfallschamber.com. Don't forget Mother's Day is this Sunday, and I want to wish Happy Mother's Day to my mom, my wife, and all the mothers out there. And also, one last item, I would just like to, from the city and from myself and council, extend my condolences to the Hauser family for the loss of Rich, who was a big part of our community for many, many years. So to Rich's wife Pam and the whole family, please know that you're in our thoughts and our prayers. And with that, we do have a presentation tonight. Catherine Hoyer from the Panhandle Health District. Catherine, so yours.
And it might actually be me, Mayor Joe Regallo.
Okay. Take it away. It says Catherine Hoyer or under your name?
It does, and I went, I'm not intending to be misrepresenting, but apparently that's the benefits of technology.
And one more time, would you give your name just for the record, please?
Sure. Joe Regallo, Panhandle Health District.
Thanks, Joe.
And so this afternoon, I shared with the chief night some draft language that we recommended you folks use. It's consistent with the same messaging that we sent to food establishments. And that includes all the food establishments in all of the five North Idaho counties. The process is pretty straightforward. There's a three-page form that's a fillable form. They can fill it in online, or they can print it out and handwrite it. In either case, the food establishment will fill it out, check the boxes that they are going to work with those processes and procedures that are outlined in the governor's plan. And so they would go through and have had any additional or different measures other than what was contained on the plan. Then there's a space to write that. They sign it. And then they are able to email it back to a discreet address that we have on that recommended language that we provided to the chief today. And it would be the exact and identical site that we already have on our website, and then we email out everyone. So basically, if they got it from the city of Post Falls, they would also have the identical information they got from Panhandle Health and is on our website. And our understanding of the governor's guidance is all that is required of them is to fill out the plan, check the boxes that they're going to, that they're going to use or write in whatever language they want. If they've got additional procedures or something different that they're going to do, they sign it and they send it to us. That allows them to open when stage two becomes available for restaurant dining, which is right now scheduled for the 16th of May. If for some reason there was something on that form that would cause us concern, we would contact the restaurant or the food establishment and ask them, you know, some questions about it. But just to be clear, we are not going to, they're, these are guidelines that are established by the governor's team. They are not necessarily items that are covered in the food code and would be otherwise enforceable under the food code. So they're mostly guidelines and recommendations. For instance, there's nothing in the food code that talks about, you know, distancing of customers. That's an additional guideline that's put out by Idaho rebounds. So that's pretty much the plan. The governor's office has been pretty good about delivering information. We've already got all of that for stage two for business or for restaurants on our website now and available. I would let everyone know that this afternoon, we posted on our website, because we received them from Idaho rebounds and the governor's office, stage two protocols for other businesses opening in stage two. And specifically, that would include a separate protocol sheet for close contact services. One of those ones that I know I've been waiting to hear about barber shops, hair salons, nail salons, and cosmetic services. So that guidance is out today, and it's on our website, as I said, as well as on the governor's website.
That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions of Joe? I'm seeing none. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate your time. Are there any amendments to the agenda tonight?
There are none tonight, sir.
Are there any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, and site visits? Lynn?
I have one. I drive by the 10th Street project probably three times a week in doing my duties at our church. So I'll do whatever council requests.
Mr. Wilson, any issues with that?
No, not for just driving by on your way to and from your normal life.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, Shelley, would you present the consent calendar, please?
Thank you, sir. Item A is minutes from the April 21st, 2020 city council meeting. Item B is payables, April 14th through April 27th, 2020. Item C is Green Meadows subdivision flat application. And item D is the police department equipment to be auctioned off list.
Very short consent calendar tonight. Are there any questions?
I've moved for approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, please take the role.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wellham?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
We can pass this. Thank you. We do have three public hearings tonight. And the first public hearing is the 10th Street vacation. And I'm not sure who's taking lead on that. Ah, there's Mr. Manley.
All right. So can you guys all see the slideshow?
Hi, Joe.
Yes.
All right. So John Manley, planning manager here with the city Post Falls, here to introduce the 10th Avenue Vacation Case File VACA 1, 2020 is the case file number. The owner applicant of this is Kenny Ross at 306 West Mullen Avenue, Post Falls, Idaho. The requested action is to review and approve the request of vacation for a portion of 10th Avenue, which was Exhibit S1 within your staff report. You see this here, the location of the vacation highlighted in the red hashed box. It's just west of Spokane Street and south of 10th Avenue. More specifically, you can see here in the exhibit, it was part of the request, the proposed future buildings. One of them is actually the foundation is in on the west parcel, from my understanding. And the current situation is that it's less than five feet, just under five feet from the current property line. The vacation of that right of way would facilitate and allow these structures to be in conformance through some processes within the city of Post Falls. Specifically, we would have to follow up this with some administrative permitting, but it would allow a conforming project in the future. Looking at the request, staff has really no concerns with the proposed vacation. The one concern we did have is could we get sidewalk drainage and utilities? This can be facilitated through an easement rather than right of way alone. And there we can attain the public benefits with the improvements as well as get development on the site. Agencies that were routed, you see here on the screen, we did receive no comments of the proposed vacation. That pretty much sums up the request. Do you have any questions for me at this point?
Are there any questions? John? Al?
I mean, why did this property or the foundation go in too close?
That may be, I believe the applicant's rep is available for those, that question alone. I do know that there was some situations with getting it constructed, and there was an attempt to work with staff to get this in the correct location. Ultimately, though, under further review and not the most ideal time and place, this was discovered. And so therefore, both the staff and the applicant looked for a creative solution to mitigate this occurrence.
My other question would be that are we going to vacate an equal piece of property on either side of this property? There's two adjacent home or properties.
Yeah, it was discussed, because we have a property to the east. They already have their frontage improved, and I can go to that aerial. Here, you already have some sidewalks here. At this location, staff kind of mulled over, should this go further to the west at this point in time? Being the fact that this is close to Mullen Avenue and Southeast Way, leaving that option open for future considerations probably may be in the best interest at this point in time. But we didn't see that vacating this would be detrimental to the downtown evolving in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I can't see on my screen, Linda and Carrie, I can't see you in the thumbnail. Are you okay? Do you have any questions?
Joe does.
I'm sorry, Linda, do you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
I say, I didn't have the same question as Alan, and then it didn't really get a response that I either understood or... My concern is, is if the foundation was poured prior to or without knowledge of what the property line, true property line is, then I don't want to set a precedence that if somebody can just go ahead and pour a foundation, and we'll go ahead and give them some right of way back. So I'd really like some more details on how this happened in the first place.
Like I said, I think I'd like maybe the applicant to explain maybe their side of how they got from point A to point B. I do know that there was an intent to meet code by the applicant. Did the share stop? Because do you guys still see that shared screen? Okay.
I can't see the shared screen.
Yeah, it went away on me as well. We'll go to share that. Is it back?
Yes, can see it now.
All right. Yeah, I don't know what happened. So apologize for that. But, so once again, like I was stating, is the applicant's intent was to meet city code. They were aware of the setback. In the field while they're pouring, they believed that they had gotten some confirmation that they were in the correct location. Ultimately, under some additional reviews to the permitting process, it was discovered that they encroached. There was no intent by the applicant to not meet code. It was an incidental occurrence through a misunderstanding, I believe, in the field. So staff got with the applicant to figure out a creative way to meet setbacks and still get the public improvements.
Good, Joe.
So what exactly led them to believe that they were in the proper location? Did staff misdirect them somehow?
I believe there was some of a field visit by, in the explanation of a methodology to put the foundation in the correct location. I do believe there was a staff member that said that where they intended to do it by the methodology through a communication was going to work. Now, that being said, there may have been a misunderstanding on both parties or miscommunication to resolve this ultimate location. I see Bob Seals showed up. I don't know if Bob wants to add additional commentary on this, as you were involved in this a little bit as well?
You pretty much summed it up well enough. There was communication with the building department staff, and there was described as to where the property lines were to staff while they were on site. Staff did note, well, it sounds like you've done it correctly. And it turned out in the end, after a as-built was performed or the survey was done on the property, was that it was not in the correct location. This does, of course, lead to a bigger picture question as to whether or not the city should be requiring foundation as-bills prior to framing. And I think that that should be something that we take up in not too distant future, so in lieu of this type of situation, but...
Joe, go ahead.
The typical allow foundations to go in before a survey is done?
Typically, foundations are not allowed to go in before surveys are done. In this situation, the applicant indicated he knew where the four corners were and that a survey was going to be performed. But based on timelines, the survey was, I believe, a few weeks out. They felt the need to move the project forward as quickly as possible, and unfortunately, it backfired. They provided us with the lines as to where the foundation was going to be go, was going to be going in relation to the supposed property lines. But the front property line was not in a location where they had thought it was. Based on, they had based it on another assumption, based on the neighboring property. So I'm just in trying to mirror it up, so.
For the questions, comments? And I can't, I can't see all council members, so if you do have something to say, and I'm not calling on you, please let me know. With that, that would be the staff report. Does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes, he does.
Name for the record, please.
Go ahead, Mr. MacArthur.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
I believe the owner builder Kenny Ross and his wife-
Excuse me, Scott, would you give your name for the record, please?
Sorry, Scott MacArthur, H2 Surveying and Engineering. I'm going to let the owner builder represent this case, and I'll step in as needed.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Hello.
Yes.
My name is Kenny Ross. I appreciate your guys' time on this matter. To answer the question that Joe had, typically, building houses, you would have a building permit in hand. In this particular case, we were trying to go forth. Oh, it's, I'm sorry, guys. I do not speak well publicly. I, what happened in this particular case was we got our foundation permit, and we poured it, we poured our footings. We had our footings inspected. And the inspector asked me how I got the front of the building, and there was, I told him how I got it, and he seemed to think that that was okay, and he approved us to pour the footings. It wasn't until the foundation walls were actually just about to be poured when we got our survey back. And that's pretty much, right after we poured the walls, is pretty much right when we ran into a problem with our foundation being too far forward. We do accept responsibility for this. We were under the impression that the inspector was aware of your guys' right of way. We, in addition, will be providing easements for utilities, sidewalks, and et cetera. We just are trying to be in compliance with Post Falls city standards. And that's, that's what I got.
Any question, Mr. Ross? Seeing none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Shannon, is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
We have none.
With that, I will close the public hearing, and I guess I officially didn't open it to start with, so I apologize. I don't have a gavel. And I will close the public hearing. I have a question for Mr. Wilson. Warren, this was, appears to be an unintentional situation. And to go back to a comment, I think, where Mr. Malloy and Mr. Wolf were coming from, does this cause us any issues as we move forward by granting a vacation of a piece of right of way to assist the homeowner?
Thanks, Mayor. My answer would be that every situation that we have a hearing on needs to be weighed on its own facts. In this case, it sounds like we had an unfortunate misunderstanding of where the edge of right of way was. I think you should weigh this application based on, is there a way for us to provide the necessary public infrastructure while giving them the relief that they're looking for? Honestly, what you're asking yourselves tonight is, what's the public interest? Is the public interest taken care of here? If it is, then I think you have a position where you can go ahead and vacate it. If there's no way for us to provide the public interest, then you probably shouldn't.
And the fact that we have, will have easements for the sidewalks, et cetera, that would serve the public interest?
I think that's up for the mayor and council to make that determination, but that's, I think, the idea.
Okay. Council comments? Linda?
I would just say that I think sometimes mistakes happen, and it does appear that the sidewalks are going to go in. And I believe that it is in the best interest for just the city and the applicant to realize that the infrastructure will be there. It's an unfortunate mistake. And I think that, given the fact that we're trying to do some possible different standards in the downtown area, that I think we may see more of this, where people are building closer to the property line. So that would be my comments. I would be in favor of the vacation.
Thank you. Mr. Borders?
We're getting the easements for the infrastructure improvements, but who's paying for the infrastructure improvements? I.e. the sidewalks, the swells?
This is Bob Steel, just comment on that. The applicant would be the one that pays for the sidewalks and improvements.
Okay, I'm fine with that, and I would support the vacation.
Any other comments? Steve?
So whether it's an easement or a right of way, we're still getting about the same amount of property from the owner for the sidewalks and the improvements? Or is it going to be a little bit smaller easement? Is the easement going to be smaller than the right of way, or is it the same?
John, if you want to pull up that map and just let us know, I think it's really similar. It's very close. I believe that we're losing a little bit of it, a couple of feet maybe. But it provides the space that was needed for the sidewalk and swale area.
Okay, yeah, if it's only a couple, less than a couple of feet, I'm fine with that. So I would support that.
John, you want to add anything?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, sounds good.
Can you see me, Mayor?
I can't, Joe, but I know you had your hand up, so please go ahead.
It's a stupid question, but by giving up this right of way, are we essentially giving the proponent an extra 10 feet of property?
Um, yeah, in essence, yeah, by moving the right of way, their tax parcel will gain 10 feet along the northern edge. But at the same point, the usability of it would, is still going to be the public sidewalk and drainage swell and everything.
So the biggest issue here is if we ever want to expand 10th Street wider or 10th Avenue wider, then we're now limited more by 10 feet on that side, correct?
Well, we still would have that easement. We still have the easement there that has for sidewalk swell and curb. So with that, I believe you could still do some public improvements within that easement area.
So what does the city potentially lose in the future? If we want to, if we wanted to, we didn't grant this, we wanted to expand the road as wide as we possibly could. Could we make it wider than we could if we do grant this vacation?
I think the limiting factor would be is if you widen the road, you would lose out on available space for your curb swell and sidewalk. So it would make it difficult to attain maybe those type of benefits down the road. So there would be a natural constriction between the sidewalk swell and curb and widening the road.
John, as the planner, do you ever anticipate that the road will need to be widened to the maximum width that is currently allowable without this vacation?
Off the cuff here, I mean, I don't believe that this small stretch would be long-term detrimental to the area. If it was a larger stretch, like let's just say we're looking at the parcels to the west around the, those areas, I think that potentially would be more detriment, could be more detrimental. Rob Paulus may want to comment on that, as I see he's available.
Rob, any comment?
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. According to our transportation master plan, 10th Avenue is not anticipated to need widening within the next 20 years. It's speculating going out beyond that, but 10th Avenue basically dead ends with the elementary school on the far west end. And as traffic patterns increase, we don't see that the traffic volumes on 10th Avenue will ever be increasing to the point that would require anything more- to the point that would require anything more than its current two-lane configuration or potentially a, a left turn pocket to get onto Spokane Street. However, we can accommodate that with the curb where it's going to be installed with this project, which is at the same location as the curb immediately to the east.
Thank you, that helps a lot.
You know, I, I know that this is not ideal, but what's the alternative? Have the guy tear out the foundation?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments? Counsel, how would you like to act?
I would like to make a motion to approve file number VACA dash 001 dash 20.
Second.
Second and a fine for Mr. Borders from his phone. Questions? Shannon, please take it all.
Malloy?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item up under public hearings is the Tennessee Avenue vacation and I will open that public hearing.
Okay, can you guys see the PowerPoint? Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Yes, Tennessee Avenue Vacation, case file VACA 2020. John Manley here, Planning Manager here to introduce this project. The owner is Moore Construction. The applicant is Dobler Engineering. Requested action is to review and approve the requested vacation for the remaining easement that was once in Guy Road. So I know it's a little confusing because it says Tennessee Avenue Vacation and we're referring to Guy Road, but hopefully through the presentation, this will make more sense. So what you see here in the highlighted area just north of West Grange and east of Chase Road is an area of Guy Road, where Guy Road at one time extended to all the way to West Grange over the railroad tracks. Since then, we have vacated that right of way, but when we vacated it, we retained an easement because it was understood that Avista needed that easement corridor to be preserved for their services. Upon plating, which this exhibit shows, the easement went through a lot that was platted, therefore constricting the buildability of this lot. That resulted in the applicant looking at the easement and approaching Avista to find out whether or not that easement was still needed. And saw with the staff report that there was a release of interest in that easement from Avista, therefore making it eligible to be requested to be vacated. So even though it's a va- uh, vacation request, we also use that same process which we normally use for streets for this easement. So the agencies that were routed in this request, as you've seen here, we didn't receive any other agency that was concerned with retaining this easement. We did have a comment from Cooney County Fire and Rescue, but they were neutral on this. That pretty much sums up the, the request in a nutshell there. Do you have any comments for me or questions?
Any questions of John? And again, Linda, I don't see yourself or Mr. Malloy, so if you have anything to say, please let me know.
Yes, Mayor, I do have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Um, John, I'm wondering, uh, when you were talking about, uh, we all do it the same way as we would do a street vacation, then is half of that property going to the property on the west and half of it going to the property on the east as would happen if we vacated a road?
I think I would default. I don't know if it works the same way with an easement as it does a right of way. I think the, the vacation of the right of way is already, um, preserved, but maybe Warren, if you wanna comment on that?
John, can you bring up the photo of the, the lot or the, the plat?
This one here?
Thank you. So, uh, I, my quick answer is even for a street, the statute allows the council, typically it's one half to each side and then it says, or as otherwise dictated by the council in the interest of justice essentially. Here, I think we would make, if you wanted to vacate this, your motion saying that the entirety of the easement would be vacated in favor, in favor of the lot that it crosses over.
Did that answer your question, Linda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions, John, at this point? Does the applicant wish to speak?
Yes, he does. Go ahead, Mr. Dobler.
For the record, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Dobler.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the council, Gordon Dobler, Dobler Engineering. Uh, just to add a few quick clarifications, the easement, uh, as it was vacated or as it was retained in the original vacation is wholly contained on this lot. So, uh, I think Warren has, you know, astutely pointed it out. Vacation of the easement would go to, uh, the lot that it's contained on, which is Lot 1. Um, just one last clarification is when we built the subdivision, Avista had facilities in that easement, but with the subdivision construction, they brought the service off of, uh, Tennessee, which was constructed after Guy Road built. So those facilities were relocated. What was there, what was in the easement area was expanded and there are no utilities in that easement area. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Dobler? Shannon, does anyone wish to testify?
We have none.
Then I will close the public hearing. Counsel, it's up to you. Linda?
I would, um, I would be in favor of this, uh, vacation. If no one has any comments, I'm ready to make a motion. I would move to approve file number VACA dash 0002 dash 2020 in favor of the lot it crosses over Lot 1.
Motion second, further discussion? Real call, please.
Wolf?
Hi.
Borders?
Hi.
Wilhelm?
Hi.
Thorson?
Hi.
Anthony?
Hi.
Malloy?
Hi.
Motion passes, thank you. And the third, uh, public hearing we have tonight is an emergency ordinance to authorize administrative approval of subdivisions and hearing officers. My understanding is this, Mr. Cafferty presenting this?
Actually, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
Bring up my-
Open the public hearing.
Thank you. So, um, mayors, mayor and council members, tonight we have before you an ordinance for consideration that makes some temporary changes to how we process hearing items in the city. It does a couple of things. Let me bring those up for you really quickly. The first thing it does is that for 182 days, which is the time limit allowed for emergency ordinances, all subdivisions would be treated as minor subdivisions. It also would authorize for that same 182-day period the flexibility for us to use a hearing examiner in lieu of the city, or excuse me, the City Planning Commission to hold land use hearings. Other than that, the process would remain exactly the same with a, an appeal coming to the city council. For the subdivision process, all subdivisions would be approved as minor subdivisions. Currently, there's a breakpoint with larger subdivisions going through a public hearing process where properties in the immediate 300-feet surrounding area is notified. For minor subdivisions, the abutting property owners are notified about the application. They're given a chance to comment on our standards, whether or not the application has appropriate roads, water and sewer, whether the lots meet the appropriate zoning requirements. Um, so that level of public input would still be allowed. Staff would review the, the criteria, make sure that we're meeting our criteria. From there, a decision would be issued and that decision could be appealed to the city council through the planning commission. So ultimately, if people wanted to get in front of this, the planning commission or the city council, they could do that and get a public hearing. This would just give us the flexibility to frankly get some of the non-controversial subdivisions through the process faster. I, I would note that the state code does not require hearings on subdivisions. That's something that we require of ourselves. Following approval, the process would remain exactly as we do now. The, the application would come back to the council with a MDA construction improvement agreement and ultimately signing off on the final approval of the plat. Moving on to the hearings examiner, uh, the state code allows for the use of a hearing examiner. The hearing examiner can issue final decisions. You can use them for subdivisions, special use permits, variances and rezon requests. Currently, our code contemplates this and says that we would pass a resolution to authorize the hearings examiners to do, um, hearings. The one thing we don't have in our code that's a requirement of state code is the state code requires that our code say whether or not the hearings examiner will issue an advisory decision or whether it'll be a final decision. And so we decided to throw that into this emergency ordinance as well. The idea here being that I gather you're having a hard time hearing me.
I, I hear you fine.
All right. I will tell the little elf to go away. So the idea here is we're in the middle of frankly some shifting regulations and requirements for how we hold public hearings. We're obviously doing this by Zoom tonight. If we get into a scenario again where we're allowed to have in-person public hearings, but we have limited capacity, limited sizes that we're allowed to have in the room, trying to schedule a hearing in front of one person rather than a hearing in front of seven people may allow us to have in-person hearings more quickly. We don't know whether we will actually use a hearing examiner, but it allows us to have a little bit of flexibility in the hopes that we can maybe hold some in-person hearings at some point in the, in the near future. So the, the needs that we're looking at here, um, we have an obligation to provide timely answers to property owners who are looking to develop their property. At the same time, we have obligations to make sure that the public has a right to input. We're trying to make sure that we're accomplishing both of those items. Um, I already mentioned that hearings are not required on subdivisions. We would still have hearings on all of the other types of applications that we have. Um, with that, again, the changes are temporary. That's 182 days. After that, the code would revert to normal. And that's all I have for you. I'd happy to answer any questions you might have.
Warren, I have a question. You talked about, uh, being able to provide a timely, a hearing. And if in fact we did go to a hearings examiner, are there enough available that we could do that on a timely basis, uh, on a, in a quicker fashion than if we ran it through our normal channels?
I think so. We've had a couple of people indicate an interest in, in providing that service for us. We've not explored that to date because we don't have the authorization frankly. And we're hopeful that maybe we won't need to use a hearing examiner. This is really put in there in an abundance of caution to give us some flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Warren?
I, I had one question.
Go ahead.
So Warren, and I asked this of John earlier today, is you said it would probably have no impact on the budget, but how would we intend to fund this if we did use a he- hearing examiner?
So we would pass that cost to the applicant. That applicant would pay for the cost of the hearing examiner as part of their application costs.
Okay, so it's no cost to the city taxpayers to be the applicant picking it up?
Honestly, there's probably some nominal savings to the city because the hearings examiner could write their own reasoned decision, which saves staff time in preparing that currently. It's, man, it's not a ton of savings, but there's a nominal savings there as well.
Linda?
Um, Warren, I'm wondering, um, this isn't put under ordinance and resolutions on the, um, agenda. I'm wondering if you're looking for an ordinance for this or, or are you gonna bring that back at a later date?
So we have the ordinance for you tonight for consideration. Um, our new format of our, our, um, agendas have changed a little bit so that typically we will bring back ordinances, but occasionally we intend to bring them under new business where they're timely or there's a, a need for timely consideration. And this was, we have this on the agenda as an action item for you tonight.
Yeah, thank you. I saw that it was an action item. I just didn't realize that it was an ordinance because I, I guess I'm a little confused about how it's written. Thank you.
Karen?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So there would be no public input on these, whether it's a hearing examiner or administrative authorization?
No, there would, there would be public input on both. If it's a hearing examiner, the hearing is still held as, as normal, except it's in front of a hearings examiner rather than the planning commission. In the case of subdivisions, um, notices set out to the adjoining property owners who then have the ability to comment.
And I have another question. So in the memo, which was slightly different than what your presentation was, it said that dissatisfied parties could still potentially field decisions.
Yeah, that's correct.
So they would appeal them to the planning and zoning?
Sure.
Then to the, if they, if they were dissatisfied there, then to the, um, it has to come to the council.
That's correct. So the first step would be under our administrative appeal procedures, they could ame- appeal the decision from, from the staff, assuming this is a subdivision. From the staff, you could appeal that to the planning commission and from the planning commission, you could appeal it to city council. In the case of a hearings examiner, the appeal would come straight to the city council.
So I know that this is good for 182 days, but if things straighten out in 90 days, will we go back to the planning commission?
We certainly could.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the maximum allowed by statute is 182 days. If we're hopefully back to complete normal before that, we can repeal this ordinance with one trip to the city council.
Thank you. Malloy?
Just wanna make sure I've got everything straight. So the way things are now, I've got minor subdivisions and major subdivisions. Difference being is a minor subdivision, you only have to contact the adjoining property owners. A major subdivision, you have to contact everybody within, is it 300 feet? Is that correct?
Correct.
So that would go away, uh, under this emergency ordinance, correct?
No.
That's correct. So the, the difference would be instead of noticing the 300-foot radius, we're noticing the adjoining property owners.
Oh, we've, we'd still have a public hearing of sorts in front of one person instead of the P and Z commission, but only a limited number of people are gonna be notified of that hearing directly.
That's correct.
Uh, we're having a public hearing right now uh, in front of a body while maintaining all the social distancing requirements and so forth. Why couldn't P and Z do the same and still maintain the code as written?
They can. And I will tell you that we've not tried to yet do a large hearing. I have told that a couple of jurisdictions that have tried to have hearings where you had multiple people wanting to testify, that those hearings have taken upwards of four hours apiece. The concern that we have is that we have a fairly healthy backlog of hearings that this would allow us to be able to get timely answers. If we're trying to run all of them through our normal processes, we're probably only gonna be able to schedule one or two hearings per night. Running two hearings per month, which is one more than we normally do, we're still looking at months trying to catch up to the number of applications we're seeing. So we, the concern is we want to make sure that we can provide the timely answer that we're obligated to provide.
So I don't know how many, uh, what the backlog is and how much that consists of minor versus, minor subdivisions versus major subdivisions. Can we? Uh, the biggest part that bothers me is the lack of notice on the major subdivisions, meaning that we're not getting direct mail out to people within a 300-foot swath. And I think that's pretty important. Uh, in, you know, the, the surreal times we're all living in right now, there's been a whole lot of due process stripped away from people and I think people are getting really frustrated about that. And we're trying to strip away some more from people who may, who will be directly affected by these things. So So that's the biggest concern I have is the lack of direct notification, whether it goes in front of a hearing examiner or P and Z. Either way, I don't really, I don't have a huge feeling either way on that one. It's the it's the lack of notification that bothers me. So can this be modified somehow, saying that a major subdivision still needs to be notified within a 300 foot radius?
So we could make that change. I don't know that that's, we would have to make a change to the ordinance and bring it back. Does that have to figure out what that looks like? But that's something we can certainly change. I would tell you that the training that we're receiving currently, and we've been hearing this for the last few years, is that that's hearings on subdivisions are probably something that we shouldn't be doing anyways because they're kind of akin to a building permit. If you can meet the requirements of the code, you should be entitled to use your property as the code authorizes. And so typically for subdivisions, you're looking at, do the roads meet our standards? Does the water system meet our standards? Does the sewer system meet our standards? Are the lots configured to meet our standards? If it meets those things, the training that we're currently getting is that you probably shouldn't hold a hearing. So even if we don't go forward with this tonight, this is probably something that we're going to want to revisit down the road to try to make our process as as streamlined as it can be and yet still providing an appropriate level of public input.
I certainly appreciate that. And that is definitely something that's probably worthwhile looking at. The concern right now is the timing. We're making the we're making the change in the middle of a of a state of emergency where there's all kinds of of pretty intrusive changes happening. So that would, that could be viewed upon poorly by the by the public. The other question I have too is if we were to allow a an examiner for minor subdivisions only and leave the major subdivisions with the current process, is that another option? Would it actually save any time?
Probably not, because currently the staff is reviewing the minor subdivisions. So that doesn't change a whole lot. The hearings examiner, assuming that this passed tonight, would probably be limited to special use permits, zone changes. Those are the two that they would probably see. The subdivision would go through this through the staff as well with an appeal to the planning commission.
My final thought on this too is that, you know, if we do approve this, I would like to see a clause rather than, you know, the limiting at the maximum 182 days or whatever it is to that or until the state of emergency is ended, whichever comes first.
We could do that as well.
Steve.
We would still go under the notification, still have to publish it in the press under legals that the city of Post Falls is hearing, having a having the meeting with the hearing examiner.
For hearing, yes, that's correct. For anything that's going to the hearings examiner, it would be noticed exactly the same as we're currently doing. The only difference would be at the hearing examiner hearing the item and not the planning commission.
Okay, so it'd still be published, so there'd still be public notice of it?
In that fashion, for for the subdivisions who that are going to go through the administrative process, that would not be true.
Okay.
Jerry, do you have a question?
Yeah, so if if it's noticed and it's going to the hearing examiner, there's still no public comment?
Anything that goes to the to the hearings examiner is exactly the same. There's an opportunity to testify, to rebut evidence, everything that we normally do. Think of it as trying to get a judge rather than, so the hearings examiner is essentially acting as a judge. Everything else is the same.
Well, I know that I know that there's a lot of unknown right now and no one has a crystal ball. But at our last meeting, when I had inquired about the state of emergency, the thought was that this is going to go through the year. You know, go through the end of the year 2020. So 182 days is six months. So likely it will go the full 182 days. Because I don't see the state of emergency ending before that time.
But if you went either or, you'd have that option. And then at the end of that 182 days, we'd have to decide what action to take at that point.
Yeah.
Linda.
If we don't have any more comments, I would make a motion.
Well, we still have testimony.
Oh.
This was staff reporting questions.
Oh, I see.
Sorry, so. No more questions, Warren, at this point? Shannon, anyone wishing to testify?
We have one.
Actually, I'm sorry, it's the applicant. That would be us, correct?
That's us.
Okay, so now we're down at the, anyone wishing to testify?
We have one in opposition.
Okay, and please state your name for the record. You've got four minutes. Shannon will notify you when three minutes is up. And then at the end of that time, testimony will be over. Name for the record, please.
The name is William Scott Howard. And Mr. Mayor and Honorable Councilman, just making sure you guys can hear me here.
We can.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this today here. As I was going through the agenda on, that was posted on the website here, the copy of the ordinance attached therein. I wanted to point out that the majority of the reasoning for this being an emergency ordinance are have been either removed, proven false, nullified, or not applicable in our situation, including the March 25th order by Governor Brad Little, the stay at home order, which was rescinded. That order can be found at the governor's COVID-19 website that has shown that that order has been rescinded. The new stay healthy ordinance or order by governor states that business and government agencies may resume operations at physical locations in the state of Idaho. So that being said there, the need for this ordinance here does not meet the needs of it being an emergency ordinance. To follow up here, looking through the ordinance or the ordinance as it's written and published for public review, it does remove all notification requirements as it is posted on the agenda. It removes the requirement to post a notice in the public paper. It removes the notice for property owners within 300 feet. It removes the property notice required on the property. It removes the notice and request for comment to be mailed to agencies, utilities, and other jurisdictions deemed appropriate. It removes the Planning and Zoning Commission from every aspect of this, including the appeal process, as it is written, stricken through on the record. I would encourage the city council to deny this emergency request as there is, while we are currently in a state of emergency for the state, requiring this ordinance to change the city code, remove the public input, and bypass current processes does not seem the right thing to do at this time. And as it is written here, the removal of all such notices with addition to the the aforementioned revoked or rescinded ordinances, I highly encourage you all to vote no on this emergency ordinance. If you want to come back with an ordinance that modifies this in some other manner that does not require such an emergency state to go in and further reduce the public's ability to be present and testify on these matters, I highly encourage you to do that if you so need to. But counsel, I do ask you to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, would you care to respond?
Here are a couple of quick comments. Mr. Howard is correct that the ordinance does show that all of the normal notification procedures are stricken because those are the the requirements for how we would handle a hearing on a subdivision, not how we would handle an administrative review of a subdivision. The things that you don't see in the code, because we only show those provisions of the code that are being amended, or all of the appeal language that lives elsewhere in our code. So you still have the right from an administrative process to appeal it to the planning commission and ultimately to the city council. As far as whether or not there's an emergency exists, we're still under a stay safe order. It has the same restrictions on public gatherings as it did the stay home order. We hope that that change in the near future, but we don't know exactly what's going to happen. We're hearing guesses that this is probably going to come in waves and we're going to see some loosening up of restrictions and some tightening up of restrictions. And so really, this is aimed at trying to provide enough flexibility that we can provide everybody's due process, the due process of the citizens, but also the due process of folks who are looking to develop their property in a timely manner.
Thank you. Any questions, Warren? Shannon, that was the only person wishing to speak, is that correct?
That is correct.
I will then close the public hearing. Counsel, how would you like to act?
Well, I would make a motion. I would move to place the ordinance, emergency ordinance, to authorize administrative approval of subdivisions and hearing officers to include no more than 180 days max or until the state of emergency is lifted and on its first and only reading while under suspension of the rules.
Okay. Second, motion second of a question. Linda, you said 180 days, I believe it's 182, is that correct, Mr. Wilson?
That's true.
182, excuse me.
Thank you, thank you. Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Further discussion? Mr. Malloy.
I still think there's there's ways to speed the process while still providing all of the, certainly the notifications to the public, public hearing. I understand that there are technical difficulties with Zoom meetings. We've obviously, our first one was a perfect example of that. But if a if a meeting that was would normally take an hour, takes four hours, but it maintains everybody's right to a hearing, I think that's fine. We all got to make sacrifices for this and we don't need to sacrifice now the public's input. It seems a little bit backwards to me to allow things to go through and get passed and then the public has to try to get it undone to be heard. So I would be opposed to this.
Linda.
Dr. Joe's statement, I think I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Mr. Wilson, the Mr. Malloy expressed concern. I know Counselor Thorson has expressed concern that this would eliminate public's right to input. Is that correct?
So the the public input, if the subdivision is heard through the staff, currently as it's drafted, it is notices sent to the adjoining property owners. If we want to include that to notice to all the folks within 300 feet, we can do that. That would be something that we can do. Or we can, honestly, this is something for your consideration. We will follow your lead.
Mr. Anthony.
I would feel more comfortable if we went and we could do all the notices because I still think the public, the way it was explained to me, if we do all the notices with the hearing examiner, the public can still come to City Hall. So many people could be in the council chambers to give testimony and the other people would wait out in the lobby and then be able to come in and testify once we met that number of people. But I think the biggest concern is the notices of the public that were that we have a hearing examiner holding that that meeting. So I'm kind of with Joe there. If we can do the notices, I would be in favor of this ordinance to let the public know.
Jerry.
Yeah, it's not just a noticing, it is the ability for the public beyond just writing to have input and and testify.
They are allowed that. We've, is that correct, Mr. Wilson?
So anything that's going in front of the hearing examiner, everyone gets notice, everyone can testify.
Everyone can testify.
The ones that you can't is if it's if the subdivision is heard through the administrative process that we're currently using just for minor subdivisions. In that, in that case, it's just in writing.
Mr. Wolf.
I guess I'm going to take the other side of this issue because the thing that concerns me or bothers me is when the public does come in and testifies on a public hearing and they really don't have any rights. If the if the applicant has checked all the boxes and crossed all the Ts, it's frustrating for the public to come in and say, well, I don't like this or it shouldn't be done. And it's like, it's already a done deal. They've already done everything that they need to do. So I understand where everybody's coming from as far as public input. But if the public input can't be considered, what's the point?
Linda.
So I guess Counselor Wolf, if I'm understanding you correctly, are you saying that if the applicant meets all of the criteria for the subdivision to be approved, the council has no reason to turn it down, which I totally agree with? Is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, we've seen it before where people have come before even planning and zoning and we've had to back out of it because we can't really do that. So again, I think, Warren, you can clarify this for me. But if all those things are in order, it's kind of a moot point. That's why we're not technically required to hear subdivisions. Is that correct?
So you're kind of hitting the nail on the head. And that's, under state law, we're only allowed to consider certain items for each of our our public hearing items. For subdivisions, really, you're focused in on lots meet the requirements of the zoning code, their utility isn't as their proper street network. If they meet the approval criteria, that's all we can consider. If someone doesn't like its impact on their property or they don't like something else, a lack of open space, whatever it happens to be, if they don't like that, it's not something that the city can consider in determining whether or not to approve the application. I think that's why we're starting to see in our training at a statewide level, a push for us to start moving away from public hearings on subdivisions because it does exactly what you're saying. It it invites the public in, asks for their comment, and then infuriates them because their comments don't really get them where they hope it would get them.
That's my point exactly.
So the public's input would come in the more at the zoning annexation and or zoning phase of this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Joe.
I appreciate everything that's just been said, but I don't think we need a state of emergency or an emergency ordinance to make changes. So I still think this is the wrong way to do that.
Linda.
Um, well, I'm just, I just want to be clear that this is only for subdivisions. It's not for annexations and it's not for zone changes. Is that correct?
So for annexations, that's always a city council item that would come to you. For zone changes, there's the potential that we could take a zone change through the hearing examiner, but it would never be determined by staff. It's either going to be a recommendation from the hearings examiner or the planning commission. That recommendation comes to the city council who makes the ultimate determination.
Linda.
Well, just kind of along that same lines, I think that more than people objecting to subdivisions in the past couple of years, they have been objecting to annexations. So I I feel like I understand the subdivision ordinance. I understand what we're doing here to be right along the lines as Counselor Wolf was saying because I agree with that. But I would not like to see annexations go before a hearing examiner during this COVID-19 pandemic. I I think I think that if we have annexation requests, that we should do our best to have a public hearing via Zoom or however we can do it just to adhere to the the distancing that we are supposed to be doing. As far as the, as far as the subdivision goes, I will reinstate my first motion. So I know it's getting kind of confusing. Would you like me to? Excuse me?
Would you please restate your motion?
Okay, I would move to place the ordinance, emergency ordinance, to authorize administrative approval of subdivisions and hearing officers not to, for up to 180 days or until the state of emergency is lifted, not to include annexation hearings.
I would second that if you make it 182.
I think I'm saying 182, but maybe I'm not speaking very well.
As a motion second, Mr. Wilson, did you not say a few minutes ago, annexations have to go through the P and Z or up to council?
Yes, those, we're never going to run the annexations through an administrative process. Those have to come to the council.
So that's not part, that's not part of this change. They will continue to be handled as they are.
Thank you.
And a motion second, further discussion? And a motion second, further discussion. Shannon, would you please take the roll?
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Nay.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item up on the agenda is unfinished.
Excuse me, Mayor. I think that Mr. Wolf needs to read the ordinance.
You know, I got so, so caught up in the changes, I forgot. Thank you very much. You're right. Mr. Wilson?
Okay, an, an emergency ordinance temporarily amending the municipal code of the city of Post Falls, Kootenay County, Idaho for 182 days or until the emergency notification is rescinded, amending section 17.12060 to allow all subdivisions to be processed as a minor subdivision without the necessity of a public hearing, amending section 1820060 to authorize the use of the hearing examiner, which will final land use decisions, suspending conflicting ordinances during the term of this emergency ordinance, providing severability, providing for the publication of this ordinance by summary, and providing an effective date.
Move to approve the emergency ordinance authorized administrative approval of subdivisions and hearing officers for up to 182 days or until the state of emergency is canceled to ask the clerk to assign the appropriate number and that it be published by summary only.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Thorson?
Nay.
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Nay.
Wolf?
Aye.
Borders?
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thanks for catching me on that, Linda. Next item up on the agenda is unfinished business, and tonight we have none, followed by new business. And we have a couple items. The first is clarifying water and sewer capacity fees and repealing subsequent user fees draft ordinance. There's Mr. Cafferty.
Sorry, had a little technical difficulty there. Excuse me. I apologize. My computer kicked me out, and I had to go on my other computer, which didn't have audio and video, and I have to turn off that when they come back. So basically, what this is, is the city currently has in place a subsequent user fee ordinance, which was adopted a number of years ago. Second, turn my camera over there. It affords the city the opportunity to allow developers to put in infrastructure when the city's not in a place to do that. This ordinance has been in place for a number of years. And like many of the jurisdictions around the state, was put in place, but hasn't really been utilized very much. In the interim, since this was adopted, the city has also come up with other fees to make itself whole that has the potential for the two ordinances to clash. And so because the current tools, the city has fit better for the city's needs and the needs, excuse me, than the subsequent user fees, it's my suggestion that the city repeal subsequent user fees as an ordinance and remove that possibility from consideration for applicants. The reason I suggest that is, I think there's, again, like I stated, the potential for conflicts. Additionally, I think it puts applicants in the mindset that this is a possibility when it's very rarely, if ever, a good possibility. And so I think it's unfair to leave that out there for them to try to reach for that golden ring that really isn't necessarily attainable. So kind of a house cleaning, kind of a risk management idea was the premise behind the request that you repealed this current ordinance.
John, I have a question for you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So you've got subsequent user fee, and I may be way off base, but I've, I've kind of liked that premise. So if you have someone looking to develop, and they're putting in X number of feet of sewer that's going to serve their property, and then you've got other subsequent users that come in and occupy the space, you know, that they have crossed. So now they have access to the sewer. Does that then mean that they don't have to cover any of that infrastructure cost other than the cap fee?
Yes, that's exactly what it means. And I can state from what I've seen over the years, they usually are good for up to five years. And so the neighboring properties wait five years before they develop. So the intent of making the developer who put in the infrastructure whole is not often, if ever, realized, and more likely than not, it stalls development in an orderly progression from the surrounding properties because they know they can wait it out. And additionally, it puts the city in the position of collecting fees for a third party, kind of like the concern Mr. Malloy had in, in earlier hearing this evening about the city giving away property. This is the city acting as the collection agent for a third party by withholding permits and the like. In addition, it puts, it calls into question the other fees that the city collects, to the point where it's within the realm of possibilities that you could have to forego certain fees in order to administer this current fee for the developers. Does that?
Guess, I guess my concern would be, you're right, maybe it's seldom used, and maybe the inner, people who would occupy the interim or in between property can wait the developer out. By the same token, you could have some of the wanted to be a user of that property. And if they know that the folks on the outside are going to be putting, on the extremity, are going to be putting in the infrastructure, they could just wait till they put it in and come in, you know, next year. I just like, I guess I like to see people pay their own way, is what I'm saying.
And so by allowing this to go forward, you, the city is potentially paying their way because it's likely that you would have to forego some of your fees in order for the developer to collect this fee.
Linda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I believe that we just ran into this situation, not even a year ago, and I would wholeheartedly agree with the mayor. I feel like people should pay their own way if it's possible for them to do it. So, and I can't remember the piece of property that we were talking about, but I do remember that it was, I think it was, I think we talked about it for a long time. I think it was debated for a long time. And I do believe that we did grant a subsequent user fee to someone, but I can't, it's been a long time ago. I can't remember who that was.
Yeah. John, if, if we eliminate this ordinance, do we still have an ability, should the need arise, to come in and address this on a case-by-case basis?
The ordinance, well, a, a couple of ways to look at that. The ordinance would be repealed if you repealed it. The council always has the opportunity to reinitiate an ordinance that may more accurately address the current legal environment. Additionally, as it often happens, you have the opportunity to cite specific, you know, A, you have your impact fees, which you probably didn't have at the time this was passed. You also have your other connection fees that weren't in place when this came to light. And you can have the opportunity to make people whole through the development agreements that you enter into when they annex or in other processes. So you have other avenues available to you to make sure that people pay their fair share to get things done. Another, I mean, you can, LIDs are still a possibility, I suppose, to bring infrastructure in so that the other property owners who are reaping the benefit get to pay for that. And some other options. This wouldn't, if you repeal this ordinance, it doesn't completely tie the city's hands. It stops the city from being the enforcement mechanism between two separate parties. That's the biggest issue that it takes you out of. Because as it's drafted right now, if a party refuses to pay the subsequent user fees, the city withholds the city's other permits, even though the city's fees have been paid. As you can imagine, that's somewhat problematic.
Any other questions, thoughts on that? Mr. Wilson?
Got a couple of quick thoughts. John's correct that, that these types of arrangements, while we have done them in the past, we've not really seen anybody collect, because people end up waiting it out. Since this ordinance was adopted years ago, there's, in the last few years, has been some case law that's come out that causes me and John, frankly, both some doubts about whether or not this is a viable solution. If it were to be challenged, as John mentioned, it makes us the collection agent for a third party, which is never a comfortable position when the government comes to you and says, hey, you've paid all the fees that the government requires, but unless you pay this other guy, we're not going to let you develop your property. That can become fairly problematic. I can also tell you from personal experience and, and a prior life at a different city, I administered one of these agreements for 10 years. It puts the onus squarely on staff. If things get missed, you're creating liability every time you miss something, and that liability is for the city. They are very problematic to enforce. They're problematic to deal with. The concept is great. It's just when you get down into the weeds and trying to actually use one of these, it's not a terribly easy thing to do.
Well, again, as long as we have an opportunity to have people pay their fair share, I would be okay with it. I just want to make sure that we're not giving somebody an, an easy ride on the coattail of someone else. What other comments or thoughts? So we do need a motion on that. I would, is it just a motion to, if the council wanted to go forward, just a motion to remove the ordinance? Would that be the motion?
Um, this would be the ordinance. It's going to come back in the subsequent meeting, is my understanding. At this point.
This is one of those things that we were trying to do to confuse you. And like I said, most times we will bring the ordinances back. This is one of those. It wasn't one that the time was pressing on.
So the motion would be to direct staff to bring them back?
That's correct.
Okay. Counsel, anyone want to float a motion?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to bring it back.
I'll second.
Motion second, further discussion. Shannon, would you please take the roll?
Anthony?
Aye.
Malloy?
Aye.
Wolf? Borders?
Aye.
Aye.
Wilhelm?
Aye.
Thorson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Aye, you're a little bit hard to hear. I don't know if it's, you're just too far away or not, but you're a little bit hard to hear.
I'm actually having trouble hearing Shannon when she's calling the roll.
We'll all speak up. Next item under new business is contract for Hildy Kellogg parking lot construction. Robbie, I think, was going to present that.
All right. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Robbie Quinn, parks planner here. And I'm going to switch over to my presentation. Real quick. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. So I'm here to present the Hildy Kellogg contracts for the parking lot construction. So a little bit of background, the Hildy Kellogg Park is located on the corner of 21st Avenue and Idaho Street. It's roughly a four and a half acre park, primarily used for soccer. As you can kind of see, a full-size soccer field pretty much takes up the entire grass area on this park. And then there's kind of some native pines stands in, in various areas around the soccer. In our current parking rec master plan, a parking lot improvement in addition of a permanent restroom were medium priority items. So those are essentially what we're tackling with these contracts. So previously, we've been under contract with J U B engineers for the engineering and design for this parking lot. And there was, when, when this was presented last fall, there, one of the reasons was because J U B was also under contract with the Water Division to develop the wellhouse improvements, which right here is the existing wellhouse. And so like I mentioned, we've been in coordination with the Water Division. They are currently under construction on their wellhouse improvements. And so generally, the wellhouse is going to be a larger footprint by almost double. So the fenced area will extend somewhere in this air, this region, and the building itself is also almost doubling in size. And so with that, we ended up wanting to relocate the playground. And in our discussions with the Water Division, they also mentioned it would be important for them if we could help provide some sort of screening in shade with planting material to protect their building. And so the reason we're coming to you now is, again, because they are currently under construction. This is actually a photo taken today. You can see that the building has been removed, and they're in the process of rebuilding their site there. And so we want to go in with them from a timeline perspective, not necessarily from a contract perspective, but to be able to reduce the construction impact to the park and the park users by, by being able to make these improvements by the year's end. And so the wellhouse timeline is scheduled sometime finished towards the, the fall of this year, and our parking lot improvements would likely be complete towards the end of the summer. And so just to go over the proposed design a little bit with you, some of the parking lot considerations we had to make were for a potential crane for the future maintenance of the site. And so if you can see some of these islands that are typically planted, in this case, they'll actually be asphalt, so it'll allow a crane to come in here, park, do their maintenance, back out, and then leave the site. We are also increasing parking capacity by nearly 50%. So the existing gravel used to be right around here, and we're adding an additional 10, 10 or so spaces. And lastly, we had to look at upgrading the site to meet the current city design standards, which would include the, the curbing, the pavement, and surrounding landscape shade requirements. And so a couple other park-related improvements, like I mentioned, we're relocating the playground. So currently, it sits about in this area, and we would propose to move it up north, closer to the existing shelter, picnic shelters, and the new proposed restroom. We would be providing ADA improvements to the site with access to the parking lot, the newly installed sidewalk on 21st Avenue, and to the playground and existing shelters. And we would also be installing the restroom, as I mentioned. And lastly, a general improvement in the landscaping around the parking lot, more specifically, like I mentioned, to help screen and protect the wellhouse. So there's a grouping of an existing pines in this area. And so when these trees mature, essentially, this will be in the shade for the majority of the day. But one of the main reasons we wanted to bring this to your attention this evening as a new business item rather than the consent agenda was potential conflicts with the adjacent property owners. So in the past, some of the property owners adjacent to the park had used the park through here to access their rear yards. And while this has never been approved by the city, and there's no formal agreement, it's just something that they've, they've kind of done. And you can see these logs right here. Originally, when they were installed, they were installed straight, and some of the property owners have moved them. Park staff would move them back, and they would continue to go back and forth with the property owners, moving them again. And so last week, we sent out a letter to the adjacent property owners, letting them know that this project was coming, and they would no longer have access through the park to their rear properties with, with the required upgrades, one being the larger footprint for the wellhouse that would cut off any circulation on the north side of these pines. Secondly, the requirements for the curb. And lastly, the landscape improvements that are going to happen in this area. And lastly, the landscape improvements that are going to happen in this area. And so we're seeking action for the approval of three contracts this evening, the first for earthwork. Which would be 158,535 dollars. And the earthwork would include the utilities, so sewer water, electrical conduit. The excavation and base prep for all the hardscape elements, so the sidewalks, the. Parking lot, the curbing and the playground area. The second contract would be for about 46,000 for concrete. And again, that would be the sidewalks, curbing, curbing gutter and the playground edging. And then the last contract for 34,000 for asphalt would cover the necessary patching. For utility connections on 21st Avenue and then the pavement and striping for the actual parking lot itself. And so with that, I want to thank you. And again, we're seeking action for the approval of these three contracts.
Robbie, so with the current price of oil, is the price on asphalt more attractive than has been in the past?
Yeah, it it is less than some of the numbers we were seeing last year. Yes, but I wouldn't say it's a substantial reduction.
Another question. This is me. How the funding will come out of the general fund, is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
So where the neighbors, where they moved those logs, were they parking back there? Then to access their yards?
No, basically, there's only a cup. Can you see my screen still?
No.
No.
Can you see now?
Yes.
So the main problem was with the property here. And so, no, they weren't necessarily parking in the park. They were basically, you can see they have a lot going on back there. And so they were just accessing it through their.
With vehicles.
Yes, yes. So that brings up a safety issue too. We don't want. Vehicles driving in through our parks either.
But there's there shouldn't be, I agree with that. They shouldn't be using that as a driveway. But there shouldn't be any problem with those people whose backyard space to park. Being able to access the park.
No, not pedestrian access. No.
Yeah, okay.
Right. Yeah, they still have access through any sort of man gate. We're basically saying their their limited vehicle access will no longer be.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Linda.
Hey Robbie, I'm just wondering if that property owner, if those vehicles are licensed? Or has the code enforcement person went over there?
I would not have an answer for that. I can't say. I don't know if. If Dave, you have any experience with that?
It's okay. I was just wondering.
Okay, I think they let me unmute myself. We, I do not know if they've if they're licensed or not. I know that they have moved off and on over the past. Quite a few years, this project as far as trying to block off the usage. Even hit when Debbie Pyle was. Our supervisor. We did stop some of the users who were at the far end from driving through the park. But this is one that was just kind of gone back and forth on.
Thanks, Dave. Any other comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Al.
Robbie, I just wanted to double check. This isn't going to diminish the size of the soccer field or anything like that, is it?
Oh, so the trees that you saw in in my. Screen here. Those are still going to remain. Basically, the parking lot will go to the edge of the existing horseshoe pits.
Okay, great. Other question. $240,000 for a parking lot. I can argue that, but. Parks and Rec Commission, have they weighed in on this? I mean, is this is this how they want to spend their 240,000 bucks?
I guess I can answer that and. It was in our master plan, but no, this was has not been discussed with. The Park and Rec Commission. This has just been on the capital list.
So we're just going on the fact that it was a the. Part of the master plan versus, I mean, what does Parks and Rec, the commission themselves, do they look at these kinds of things?
They look at some of them as they come up. We look at mostly new developments, land acquisitions. This one is really something that should have been done back. When we were building this park, but it never was. We didn't have the funds. We knew that the water. Department was going to be expanding the well, so we've held off on it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the contracts for Hildy Kellogg parking lot construction.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussions? Shannon, please take the roll.
Malloy.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda is administrative staff reports. Do we have any tonight?
We have none tonight, sir.
Thank you, followed by citizen citizens' issues. And these are written comments that have to be submitted. No later than 4:00 PM on the date of the meeting. Shannon, do we have any citizen comments?
We have one.
Okay.
This is from W. Scott Howard. Firstly, I would like to say the citizen comment section is missing from the minutes from last meeting. Finally, disregarding the unconstitutional, the unconstitutionality of the governor's current and previous orders. According to the governor's new stay at home healthy plan. Businesses and governmental agencies may resume operations at physical locations in the state of Idaho. The stay at home order dated March 25th, 2020 and subsequently extended here is hereby rescinded. Requiring citizen comments via email only and not allowing citizens to be present and participate. In city council meetings is unacceptable. I request returning to proper council meetings immediately.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, do we need comment on that?
No.
Next item up, mayor and council comments, and I have none. Council comments. Linda?
I just have a question. I had a phone call today from a citizen who lives up on the west side of Spokane Street. And he was actually asking me about the Hildy Kellogg. Park where the well is and he said his water pressure is almost down to nothing up there. And he's wondering if this. This construction has anything to do with that. I told him that I would ask maybe Bob Seal might be able to answer. Someone might be able to answer that question and I could pass along the answer to him.
Thank you. Bob, John, anyone have information for Linda?
Information regarding water pressure?
Yes.
I don't really have much, but we can absolutely look into it. I'm happy to follow up on that.
See, Mr. Beecham, John, do you have a comment?
Yeah, kind of echoing what Bob said, I don't specifically have information that is a. We're working next door, so there's obviously the potential for something to be going on, but. If there's next to zero water pressure, that is not what should be happening. Customers should all still be in water service. So. If there's a way to have that person contact the water department, they could make an in-person visit or if. Contact information can get passed along to me, I could make that connection as well.
Okay, thank you, John. I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to go back. I said I had no comments, but I just wanted to let council know that I continue to reach out to governor's office. They've been very responsive. I've called down. I know Mr. Malloy and I've shared a letter. Trying to get businesses open as soon as we can. And we will continue. I will continue to reach out to governor's office. Matter of fact, I'm going to touch base with them again tomorrow. But it's our goal to get businesses open as soon as we can. So that's that's the goal. That's our effort. And of course, we are. Limited to what the governor allows. His law and his orders supersede anything the city council can do. But I did want to let you know that I remain in contact and trying to get some of these things addressed. Carrie.
Similarly, I have written a letter to the governor's office about the businesses and like a month ago. Maybe three and a half weeks ago. And I've also submitted questions for our Thursday. Conference call with the governor. On that topic which have yet to be asked. And I've not received a response from the governor's office either. But yeah, so I it's. I know he's busy, but it is a little frustrating because I know that you and I and Joe aren't the only people. That have had communication. And it's been slow in getting any kind of responses. So. So more power to you. Carry on.
I will keep reaching out. Tonight, we do need an executive session and. Wait, let me back to my agenda. Yes, we do. And so what we're going to have to do is after the motion is made, approved. We will sign off of this meeting, sign into a new Zoom meeting for executive session. And take up from there. So is there a motion to come forward?
I would move to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F. To communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss. The legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated. But intimately likely to be litigated, that we will make no decisions in that session and that it will last. No more than.
Forty minutes.
Forty minutes.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Wolf. Borders.
Aye.
Wilhelm.
Aye.
Thorson.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Malloy.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. We will enter into executive session. So I believe we leave the meeting and sign into a new one. So we'll see you there. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
Just in case there's any public still in this meeting, it's my understanding this meeting will remain open so they can stay here so that when we sign back in, they won't have to go through the process again. They're free to remain here while you're in executive session. And then when you come back, they'll be in your meeting.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. Maybe. Ward, are we okay to go?
We are. We have a quorum.
Move to adjourn. Come forward.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need adjourn. Thanks, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.